Dill County Council Regal, this is a regal council meeting. Again, we welcome all of you here. We certainly excited to see those who come out from the community to observe and to see how county business is discussed and how things are taking place and things are shaping up again. We thank you for being here, certainly from the bottom of my heart, and I know this is also the feelings of my fellow councilmen. Again, we sincerely welcome you. Thank you for being here. At this time, we're going to ask our county administrator, Mr. Administrator, Mary, to lead us into the questions.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
This time, we're going to have the invocation. This time, if you will, with your bow, with your invocation. Thank you. Father, again, we thank you again, Lord. It is your grace and it is your goodness and your mercy certainly has afforded us to be able to come here in a summer today. And for that, Lord, we thank you. There's nothing great we've done, Lord. There's nothing in our own human strength. It was because of your love and your grace and your mercy. And we acknowledge that and we take that sincerely to heart. Now, Father, we pray that you bless this meeting today and give clarity of thought, eloquent speech, let that which is right on your side and the side of the people that will let their love, and let that will be done in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
This time, we move right along with the agenda. Anyone should have a copy of it, um, out of three on the agenda and the approval to approve the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, Councilman Carrier.
I apologize. The agenda, uh, if the council needs to be amended, um, to have a second reading of ordinance. Since this is not a final action taken on this issue, uh, cause third read require a final action, it is okay to amend the agenda to do that. And the, uh, if council would approve it, um, Mr. Chairman, there would be a, uh, a motion to amend the agenda to add a second reading of an ordinance by Dillon County Council to amend the official zoning map Dillon County to rezone a parcel of land known as tax map number, a portion of 58 parcel 49 and a portion of 68 parcel 20, property owners from Dillon Property Holdings LLC and W. L. A. Farms LTD, from rural to light industrial for the purpose of expansion to hardwood grade.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney, for bringing that to my attention. However, there's a motion, we do not have a second, so we will go back and we will ask for approval of the agenda with the agenda being amended, amended with, um, um, the second reading of orders that the county attorney and the justice advisor have. So this time, we asking for approval of the agenda with the amendment, with the amendment to the agenda of the second reading of an order by Dillon County to amend the official zoning map Dillon County. We have a motion to have it figured this time. I'll make that motion. And the motion by Councilman Carrier, need a second. We amend the agenda.
Second.
Got a second, okay? And a further discussion. All in favor of the agenda being amended and approved? Any input? All right. Thank you, sir. Moving right along. All right, number four, approval of amendments, 7/12/17 is a call meeting, 7/14/17 is a call meeting, 17/17 is a call meeting, and also 7/20/17, uh, we need a motion to approve the amendments at this time.
I make a motion to approve this now.
So we got a motion, so we get a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any input? Okay. All right, moving right along, number five for the public here. Do we have anyone to sign up for the public here? We got no one to sign up, but I do want to, uh, at this time, um, want to mention that there was a letter, uh, that was sent in by the Chairman of the Board of Education, uh, Mr. Shannon Shafer. He just sent a letter in with his concern concerning the 2000, uh, July 1st, 2017, ending July 30th, 2018 budget. So I do want to just mention that, and we do acknowledge that he did send in a letter concerning, uh, his concerns. Thank you. Moving right along, number five, um, an artist to, public hearing, a, an artist to provide some little budget appropriation for the county purposes in the county of Dillon for the year, fiscal year beginning July 1st, 17, ending July 30th, 2018, and adopt and implement rates and fees and for other type purposes, county appropriations purposes, and to establish the type of business to provide for the budget. Okay, we had no one to sign up for that. All right. All right, moving right along here, out of six new businesses. Eight, First Steps Annual Gala.
I'll ask Danny to present that to you, it's a request.
This is something that y'all have done every year. This is, um, the First Steps Partnership Board will host this annual gala on Thursday, September the 28th, at 6:30 PM at Randy's Bankroll Hall. And usually, y'all, um, get a table. Do y'all want to do that this year?
Yeah, we, uh, it's something we've always supported and we can't afford to do such thing. I think it'd be a great, uh, thing to, uh, be a part of.
Can you, which is a table? How much was the next table?
Um, my gold is a thousand, silver is 500.
Just, uh, I would recommend silver.
All right. Just tell me the motion to approve, First Steps Annual Gala. I'll make a motion to approve that. Do we need a second?
Second.
Can we have any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Any input? All right, moving right along, new business, six B, overflow pipe for the landfill, $8,000.
This is, yeah, dealing with the, uh, vertical expansion at the landfill and this is a project of Arcades, so, uh, de-heck is requiring basically this pot to, I guess, a little bit under the dam so that won't overflow it throughout the outflow pot, $8,000.
How'd you come up with these figures, Mr. Gaddy? Y'all, someone went out and they looked at it and took it for bids or how's this?
No, that's Arcades.
Arcades. They didn't want to have a more support.
Yeah, they, the whole, all of the vertical expansion.
Okay. Okay, all right. Do we get a motion to approve the pipe and the landfill? I'll make a motion to approve that. Do we get a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? All in favor? Any input? All right, moving right along, the sixth C, IT policy and procedure approval for SLID and IRS.
Mr. Chairman, I got Danny, the head of IT, to give you a quick little update on this. Uh, it's several policies and procedures that's put into place that SLID has been almost pretty hard to accomplish, so, uh, going to get him to present that here today.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, several months ago, uh, we've had, um, a SLID audit first, and SLID in that audit really slammed the county hard. Uh, they performed, uh, audited on, more specifically, it was on the IT system, how we implemented a security, what we did to keep intrusion out and everything else. Uh, then we had, uh, behind that, we had an IRS audit, and they really slammed us hard. They audited the IT system, audited, um, what I was doing to provide support and all for it, and found that, um, what was lacking was policies and procedures, uh, for such system. Uh, one thing that I have already implemented, uh, which is inside a lot of these policies, is doing, dealing with auditing. Uh, really, none of this is really going to cost the county anything except for the idea, just additional time for me working and dealing with this. Uh, the users will have to follow, uh, policies and procedures by way of, for example, one is the, um, screensaver policy. So it requires if you, uh, do not use your computer within 15 minutes, it goes into a screensaver mode, pops up, and you have to, uh, enter your, um, password again to re-enter. Another is every 90 days, you have to change your password within the system and has to follow a certain complexity. Uh, those are just a few of many that they require. Uh, they require me to audit the idea if a user gets a virus, if someone is trying to attempt to break into the system. Uh, there's approximately 30 set of policies that I've had to write for what SLID has recommended I work with several of the other counties around the area as to what they were doing. And this has to pertain really to everyone that is on this same network. Uh, if, about the only two that really don't, that we, uh, that's what I was talking with, uh, county lawyer dealing with the idea about separating, anyone really almost would deal with like GIS and code if they wanted to be separated. Uh, right now, I haven't heard anything from the state saying that I've got to have anything for them right now. But who's to say two months from now, the state might say, okay, code, you know, you've got to follow one of these rules. But right now, about every county, other department of the county is being required to follow these, uh, policies and procedures that I've had to follow. And SLID and IRS have stated that it is going to get tougher as to because of the amount of break-ins, ransomware, uh, antiviruses that are going around. And so it's, it's going to be an uphill climb, uh, for all of us in the county. And I appreciate if we could, um, get approval to pass these policies and procedures, working with, um, county administrator to try to get these passed.
That's your question, Mr. Holden.
Yes, sir.
You talked about SLID wanting you to come up with these policy procedures. They look at those policy procedures that you were proposing?
They will look at them after I get them approved by the county administrator or council.
Well, I didn't answer that question. Point is, if they haven't seen them yet, how do we know they're going to be fitting for SLID? We would be better off to wait to see if they're fitting for them and come back and ask those policies or?
These were recommendations, the ones I had written, were what they had recommended, and I had to go through each one, had about 300 pages, each one of their manuals, IRS and SLID. I had to write it based off of that information and then working with other counties. About the most I might have, they might say you need to change certain wording within these and would not really require any additional approvals except for the idea just of revision.
So you feel that these, what you got right now, you feeling that these policies are fitting?
Yes, sir. I do. Yes, sir. It's been really good.
You pretty much, no choice based off of other counties. They're going to pretty much correspond like they is.
Yes, sir. I've worked with several counties and several of them working with each other, and so, yeah. South Carolina's got a pretty, uh, pretty good tight knit group that works together in trying to pass these SLID, not where it's all.
This time, we need a motion for IT policy and procedure approval. I'll make a motion. For SLID and IRS. I'll make that motion. Motion made by Councilman Carrier, do we get a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Thank you.
Any input? All right, thank you, Mr. Holden. All right, moving right along, the new business, we're going to be at six D, uh, GIS feed, Melissa Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, Melissa brought this to my attention, uh, several months ago, and just reminded me of this, so I wanted to present this to you, uh, for you guys to take consideration.
Melissa. to start charging for GIS dollars. I get requests on this daily from like timber companies, large companies wanting the parcel information, and it's something we have available, something we could charge for and make money off of. Um, I came up with these figures from, uh, polling five counties, and that's how I've arrived at the figures. Um, questions?
So right now, we're not charging those?
Right now, we're not charging anything.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, as y'all know, we getting a lot of people from prospecting in Dillon County. Folks that do this, I think Melissa's really, I mean, they don't have any problem. I mean, they expect really a charge out of, out of these things.
Yeah, because they'll go ahead and ask whenever they request the information, what is your target?
Melissa says that this, when we were doing the flyers.
Yes.
In the last eight or 10 years, we split across with other counties, but we had to pay cash to get this information in our system. Am I correct?
Yes.
Well, I'm all part charge in this country.
Yes.
So we had to pay for it, so I think we should recoup our money for paying for that service.
Any other questions?
Can we, you guys got anything further? All right, anything further, please, Mr.?
Appreciate your time.
All right, this time, we need a motion to approve GIS, uh, fee, Melissa Thompson.
I make a motion.
Do we need a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? No? All in favor? Any input? All right, moving right along. All right, the business six E, electronic waste feed landfill.
Uh, yes, I want to go up on our, uh, electronic waste feed. Uh, this Southern environmental is charging us $400 a ton now to pick up our electronic waste. That's going to make sure we charge $400 a ton when they bring it to us, the landfill. It won't affect the convenience site, but anybody brings something to the convenience site, we charge $400 a ton.
Councilor, who you want to do in the comments here, you the chairman of the, sorry, this committee?
I agree that we need to go up, but I have one question about convenience sites. Um, and I should, I see Mr. Brown back in the back, so I know if he can answer. When an individual brings a television or any kind of electronics in, are we just allowing one, Mr. Brown, one per vehicle, or can they bring a truckload in to the convenience site?
You're supposed to bring a truckload in, and some of them bring two or three in. They'll, 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 but we, I'm, I've always said we ought to hold them to one, they really.
I think that's a good idea because I only buy one.
You don't have three or four televisions to go out at one time, is that what I mean?
Bad electrical storm, if you do have more than one, so, tell you that for that.
And then if they got that many, they ought to bring one in.
Right. I agree with that.
Then I want to go around and pick them up.
I think it's a good idea, Chairman Scott, to raise the fees to what Mr. Gaddy's talking about. I'm like, I don't think it's a good idea for us to limit those people at convenience sites to one television per customer, or per trip.
What's the rule now? Is it more than one? What is that, I couldn't hear Mr. Brown, what did he?
At the convenience sites.
Yeah.
He said they can bring two or three in at a time.
Oh.
And I, like I said, I don't think anybody has three go out at one time and they've had a real unlucky day.
You want to change on that right now?
Yeah.
Or, or, or?
Uh, that's a good idea, yeah. I think we probably have to change the fees, don't we, that we charge at convenience, I mean, at the landfill. Or if we need a policy, we can do that anytime, as far as that.
Yeah, well.
But I make the motion that we change the fees that Mr. Gaddy, to the price Mr. Gaddy recommended.
Second. Okay, we got a motion, need a motion to change the fee.
There you go.
This goes down, this is Terry Hill's anything.
All electronic.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, what about these people that just bring one television to the landfill, charging the $400 rate?
I'd, no, I'd let, if they bring one, that's probably their own personal television.
That's probably end up in the woods side of the road.
Yeah, we, we got one customer in mind that we talking about.
Here's what I think going on, I think we're going to change the fee for Mr. Gaddy's, and we're going to look at later about the policy. So I think we're done now with changing the fee, and then we'll do the policy in, in a later date, okay? All right, thank you. So we got a motion to change the fee. Do we get a second?
Second.
Got a second and a motion, any further discussion? And I, all in favor of changing the fee? Any input? Thank you. Moving right along, the sixth F, uh, recreational request, I do have one for St. Mark Church who brought you the letter, and had a weekly $400.
Or how much?
One of them back to school, they got a thing to try to get other kids.
St. Mark?
Yes, we have St. Mark Church.
I'll lay off my head, St. Mark.
All right, you're a piece of stuff.
I'll worry here, man.
Okay, we only have the one, it was from Manning Baptist Church, and it was, the youth department would like to request funds to support their annual whoop bag bash towards purchasing the appropriate supplies so the youth will be prepared for the classroom.
They'll give them 50. I give them 50. Maybe to a gentleman. We need a motion this time to approve the recreational request. I'll make that motion, for the recreational request. Do we need a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor of recreational prayers? Any input? All right, moving right along, new business six G, Lisa Blue, Truett English, David Hall.
Mr. Chairman, there's a, as many of you know, there's a ballpark in Bingham that's been used by a public for a long time. I remember going out there many years ago, and property belongs to Mr. Truett English, um, and, um, closed a lease with him for a five-year period.
What are you talking about?
Just a $5 a year lease where the county will take maintenance on the property and allow for general public use. However, um, there, there is part of that park that is owned, we believe at this point by, by CSX, and after thinking about it further, we, we, before we actually approve this agreement, we probably should get those parcels under some sort of agreement with CSX too, because once we take this up, we're under the responsibility to maintain the property and don't want to just lock us into that five years until we know we have the whole ballpark locked down. So at this point, we could just, you just take that for information. And number four on that lease would be stricken out as well, and then we'll, we'll, we'll try to bring that up at a, at another meeting.
So we get a motion to defer this to the next meeting. Make that motion. Okay, I understand, fair with a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussions? All in favor to defer to next meeting? Any input? I defer to that. Moving right along, another six, H, Fire Department employees, six-month waiting period before we apply.
Mr. Chairman, we've got, uh, a workshop scheduled, I think most of it's already scheduled, as we're going to address a lot of major items as it pertains to the fire department. Uh, this issue here was, uh, brought to my attention by the administrative committee, and, you know, I stand ready to, uh, enforce whatever this, this body here instructed to say.
This time, we need a motion, uh, to approve the fire department employees, six-month waiting period before we apply. I'll make that motion. Do we got a motion, need a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Uh, what brought this up? We've had people going from fire department to fire department, since I've been on this council. I know people that have gone from Dillon to Bing, I mean Dillon to Oakland, Oakland to Station Four, Oakland to Station Five, vice versa, one to Oakland.
I don't, I don't think, no, Councilman, that's the, that is the meaning. You saying go. I think what we're looking at and what we wanted to actually craft was if someone quit and leaves Dillon County Fire Department, that they would have to have a six-month waiting period before they return. Some jobs in the workplace in general public will hire them as a rehire, and some won't. And we feel that people should be rehired, but there should be a waiting period. We should just, because we're sending out a bad message when you can say, I can just quit and just go on my back. Uh, that, that just don't send the right message out. I just think there should be some type of waiting period there.
Okay, you said, you used the word rehire.
Yes, sir.
If you're hired, that means you're a paid employee.
Right.
Now, are we talking about paid employees?
Well, you're talking about fire department, you know, individuals here, and some of them are paid employees and some are not, but we just dealing with the fire department with those who are volunteers, and if they would leave the fire department to get some discipline there, you need some kind of policy in place, uh, that would bring some discipline in, in that department. As of right now, if you look at the fire, uh, policy and procedure, there's nothing in place.
Well, this is a couple of volunteers and county employees.
And then parties, what we dealing with? Volunteers is way up, but they would be members of the fire. Anybody who's a member of the fire. If they would quit that fire department, we feel that it should be a six-month waiting period before they should be able to apply.
So you say they can't transfer if they want to go? Yeah, they can transfer.
They can transfer, but we're talking about quitting, say, I no longer want to work, I no longer want to be a part of this fire department, I'm working for this fire department.
So if you turn your gear and you can't be on another?
You're saying if they go to another, if they turn their gear with the understanding they're, they're quitting, they're quitting, they're deciding, they don't want to part of the fire department. Then they decide later, I want to be on another fire department, I want to be on the fire department. It should be a six-month waiting period.
We on four or five, but we're going to have to back up. They just fedged on some people not on together, we're going to have to back up to take them off the fire department.
You don't have anything on the book right now, so you wouldn't have to back up. You don't have anything that addresses that, and that's where we arrived to this point, now to address that moving forward.
I think I see discrimination written all over there.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? Not being derogatory.
You have?
This is a question. When you say "we," explain to us taxpayers of Dillon County who "we" are.
Dillon County government, and those who govern with us, we are charged with governing. We have, we are, the county council is responsible for passing policy and procedure. There is no policy in the fire management this time addressed the issue if someone leaves the fire department, how they should return. We feel that it's fair in that we would come up with some type of policy that would address people quitting and leaving and coming back.
Now, may I, I don't mean to interrupt, but when you keep saying "we," you and who else meant to decide this?
This is a committee, man, and it was in a committee, and I understand where you're going with it.
No, no, I'm not being derogatory.
I see what's going with it.
I just want to make it clear with the taxpayers of Dillon County who "we" are.
Yes, sir, and I think I've explained it, and that's a good question. But "we," we're the worthy administrative committee, like any other thing, it goes to different committees, we have different committees. The committee is putting a motion on the floor to have a policy. Now, I understand that you have a right either vote for it or vote against it. So the motion is put on the floor, there's a discussion. So we had a discussion.
Now, I'm going to chime back in on this discussion for a moment.
Okay.
From here to Alaska, and I've been there, from here to Sacramento, there's signs need volunteers. Now, in Dillon County, all over, you can't get enough volunteers. Right now, the city of Dillon is having to help Dillon One, our main fire department, but they're going out to put the fires out because Dillon One cannot put the fires out. And we're going to tell people they can't volunteer and go where they want. Now, that's amazing that a volunteer that'll work for $15 an hour doesn't have the right in America, in America, to go from one station to another. I don't understand. Now, we have two or three station responses because people cannot, they can't get enough people in the daytime to go put fires out. And we don't have but two to three firemen showing up at fire settings on people's property. It's our elected duty to let people volunteer to do what they want to do. Now, y'all, like you said, it's a vote either way you want to go. But when you have people that have changed all this year, people have transferred from one fire department to another, and now they can't do it.
We're not talking about transfer, we're talking about quit. We, let me help you, Mr. Moon, if I can. Just let me make something, maybe the empty out a little bit.
Okay.
If, if you had fire department now here, and you say you want to transfer to Gaddy's new, I don't see a problem with that. Don't see a problem with that. I think you're right, you should have a right to transfer. But if you at Station One now, and for some reason you don't like the way things going, and you just say, well, I'm quitting, I ain't, I ain't, I ain't working. going, and you just say, well, I'm quitting, I ain't, I ain't, I ain't working for the fire department no more. Then two weeks later, you say, well, I want to go back to work now. No, sir, I think you should have waited six months.
If a man turns his gear in and says he's not gonna do it, that's right, okay.
That's what he talking about.
Lot of names, lot more point at the sky. We know several people did that, and I know they're on fire departments right now.
Right, but we don't have nothing in place as far as in the policy. I studied and looked at the policy yesterday. There's nothing on the policy about them, whether they can stay out a week or a month or whatever. And the only thing we saying, we need to put something into place. If a man walk off and quit, he just shouldn't be to walk back in the fire department the next day. If he walk off and quit. Transferring is different. If they on fire department and later decide they want to transfer the line next week, I don't see a problem with that. But just because a man jump up and say he quit, and I want to work no more, then two weeks later, he want a job back, I think you should have waited six months. I mean, we gotta get them a message that you just can't, I can't, I can't go to sheriff's department and quit today, then, and walk back the next week and say, Sheriff, give me my job back. If you do that, you gonna wait a while. I mean, just have, you walked off your job for no good reason, we saying, we feel like you should have waited six months to go back. But for transferring, you can transfer anytime. We just talking about quitting.
I know five people turned their equipment in, and four or five of them are on fire departments right now.
I don't think any...
They turn their equipment in.
I don't think, I don't think any job you gonna go to. I think we're trying to send out the message that... Right. That other, uh, employers are sending out. You just can't use the county as a spur tie. You just can't use weeks as a spur tie. You can't use Dillon Yarn or whoever as a spur tie, just leave and come back when you want to. And that's one of the things that we're trying to put in place. Now, Mr. Moody, you worked at Dillon Four for a while. You couldn't just quit Dillon Four and just jump up and come back whenever you want to, could you?
No.
Well, that's the same message we trying to put out in. Same message.
The word volunteer means that you're giving your time.
Same message, if they quit, it should be...
Well, how about this? How about you, you, you just do that if, if your full-time engineers quit, not you volunteers?
If people quit the fire, they're a member of the fire department, and they quit, period, I think they need to wait six months before they come back. We got a motion, we had a discussion. Okay, any further discussion? Here, do we get a second?
Second.
All right. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Move along with six, new business, uh, I, preservation taxes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Council, we brought this to your attention a while back. Uh, we were thinking this preservation tax, which is, uh, coordinating with the city, where if you improved a side of your building, uh, that your taxes, what it was assessed at before that improvement, uh, that that's what you would, that's the taxes you would pay. We were under the impression, uh, that that was, uh, that it was outdated, uh, that it expired. We misread the ordinance. Uh, it meant that that tax would be good, you would pay that assessed value before the improvement for six years, not as if it expired in six years. So, uh, this, this is already intact. We were gonna bring it back to you for the second reading, but we've already got this in place, and it has expired, so there's no action to be taken place. This is an ordinance, standing ordinance as we speak.
We have any discussion? So we just take this for information?
Yes, sir, it's, it's already taking place.
Thank you. For the new business six J, department head employee.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, a fun part, and whoever you deem necessary to come down to help pass out these awards, we'll start with the department head. And, uh, Mr. Charlie Brown, you wondering why you're here today, or you already knew? Come on, we're, we're honoring you today. Hey, you thought it was the other, right? We want to, we want to thank you for all you do. Sometimes it's not appreciated as much, and you're in the grind, you're, you're one of those that work and never complains. We want to show our appreciation with this fifty-dollar gift.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, two more, we have the employee of the month that we recognize, Donella, did I say that right? Are you here, Donella?
Yes, sir.
Come on, come on, Donella. Very stressful job you have, and we thank you. You're a critical part of what we do. And Teresa Stackhouse, if you'll come up at the same time, where's Teresa? I know Teresa handles the money. So we thank you both very much. For what y'all did.
All right, move along with the agenda. That's a, that's a Friday special call.
As of yesterday, the, the general account had a million eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. Uh, subtracted the accounts payables out of that figure. It needs, leaves us a net available spend to a million three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-one dollars. And, uh, restricted funds, total amount of restricted funds, two million two-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventeen dollars.
Any questions for the panelists, though? Thank you for your report, Mr. Gaddy. Move along with my eight, artist, a separate reading artist to provide supplemental provision for the county purpose. Any county Dillon for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, June 30, 2018, to adopt and eliminate rates and fees on other tax purposes. County appropriation purposes due to establish a tax, but it is to provide for the budget. Time requires a motion for a second reading.
You need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion. It would affect the budget. July 1st, 2017, June 30th, 2018.
That's a second reading.
Second reading.
All right. We need a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor of the second reading? Any opposed? Move along with the nine council comments. Anyone who wear council comments, it's all a comment.
I'd like to make a little. I'm trying to keep it short and sweet. That ain't funny, but all of you know how bashful I am, so I'm trying to get through this, and y'all be praying for me. Let's see how I want to start this thing. I appreciate the taxpayers of Dillon County giving me an opportunity to go to Hilton here. The taxpayers paid for my trip down there, and I really appreciate it. And I learned a lot while I was down there, really enjoyed it. And, uh, it really, my part didn't cost that much, so y'all don't get mad with me. But what I really want to do here today is thank Rodney Bear, Allen Bear, Richard Gay, James Sue, just wonderful counsel, for helping me. All of y'all know what my ads were when I was running for county council. Where's the money? Well, I was here maybe three or four months, and really, I said to myself, y'all know how uncivil I can get. So I said, well, I believe I'll stay civil and see what happens. So I stayed civil. Never mentioned the money one time. I didn't hinder Rodney with it, the chairman, nobody. And guess what happens one day? I'm staying civil. I showed up here one day, and it was a, a bank statement. Here's where I sit at, for Lakeview money. That was missing. Did all of it show up? No, because we started out with a million and two, and ended up with five hundred and some. And I really do appreciate it. Do y'all want to talk, or y'all want to let me talk? All right, so...
I will talk.
My statement is, is I really do appreciate what you guys did for Lakeview and Loudon. I'm speaking for, for y'all, so I appreciate what you did, but now, here's the question. I don't mean to be mean now, but why should the taxpayers have to pay this bill twice just to give you something to linger on in the taxpayer? Why should you have to pay it twice? You paid it one time, what'd you do? You went to the bank and borrowed the money to give Lakeview and Loudon their money back. Where's that fair? You paid the one percent one time, now you got to pay it twice again. Where is that fair? I've asked for, that anybody don't like me, fine, I didn't run for county council to make friends. I ran for county council to, for the people, the people. I'm representing the people is the reason I'm asking this. Sure, y'all might not like this and might not like me for it, but I love y'all to death. The point I'm trying to make is, you did a good gesture. Great, we appreciate it, the people of Loudon and Lakeview. You know the question I've asked? Where's the money? Where's the original one percent money? You know the questions, the answers I got back? Well, we put it at Wyman Gordon, we put it out here at Harbor Parade, different... Listen, ladies and gentlemen, we talking about a lot of money. You ever seen a bunch of hundred-dollar bills piled up? Okay, the question I ask, when I get this answer is, well, we put it there, 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 there. Well, the question I'm asking is, well, show me some receipts for my money. I'm standing up for the people of Dillon County, the taxpayer. Where did the money go to? I ran on the basis of, who, who wrote these checks? Who wrote the checks for all this? They can't tell me, and the taxpayers of Dillon County, where all this money went to. Now, what is the problem? Now, enough of that. I seen in the paper today where we had a, no one showed up today to represent the tax thing. I wanted to stand up here and let the people of Dillon County, you, since I stood up the last time with that checkbook, you know how many people's been to my house crying, showing me their checks from the schoolhouse? Bus drivers, maintenance workers, different people crying, no checks. One lady got a check stub, showed me a check stub. She didn't get a check. She's working, time they took her insurance out, she's got no money. You would not believe the people in Dillon County. We fighting this tax thing, and I'm gonna show you guys and girls exactly what I'm talking about with this tax thing. It's time for the people of Dillon County to stand up. Let, let me show you what was wrong against me. One year ago, I took a part of it up. A full page in the Dillon Herald. You know how much a full page in color in the Dillon Herald costs? Sixteen hundred dollars. Now, Bessie, you straighten me out if you want to. Listen to this right here, ladies and gentlemen. And I don't mean to sound like I'm trying to campaign for elected office or anything, but I just want to let my people that sent me up here to know that they got somebody representing. Listen to this right here. And I'm gonna read you something out of the Dillon Herald, what we have as a county council has got to put up with. A lot of people say, well, I'm sure glad I'm not on that county council like you having got to. I'm having a ball. Don't feel sorry for me, don't think I'm mad. Everybody on this council will tell you I'm having a ball. They don't run. Why? Because it's fun when you write, and you're honest, and you're trying to take a stand for the people. Listen to this here, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm gonna let y'all go after a while. I'm, I'm sorry, Stephen, that I'm offended.
You ain't offended, man.
Okay, all right. Listen to this right here. Dillon County is the dumbest county in the state of South Carolina. Do you remember that full page?
I kept it, I kept it.
Thank you, ma'am. Somebody cares besides Jack Scott. The dumbest county in the state of South Carolina. Can we prove any different?
Who put that in their council?
Listen to this right here, ladies and gentlemen. This is what we got to put up with as a council, with this school board. And then I got some questions I'm gonna ask you, Stephen. Dillon County Board of Education Chairman Richard Schaefer said he has been on the county school board for twenty-nine years, and he had never seen a bank statement. Now, we talking about a man, dude, how many millions of dollars, uh, Richard, how many school, come on, have a sound, the tax...
What about six, yes, sir?
How much?
What about six?
Sixty million dollars. Come on, ladies and gentlemen, excuse me, I'm sorry that I'm, I'm boring you. Uh, uh, is the taxpayer's board?
No.
I'm not boring y'all?
No.
Okay, listen to them. Let's read them. Listen, I'm gonna finish reading what he says now. Dillon County is the dumbest county in the state of South Carolina. Listen what he finished saying now. This is what we got to put up with the head of the school board. Listen to me now. I've met with this crowd. The financial people on this board has met with, and we've done everything we can to work something out with this crowd, the three of me goes. All right? He, he said he doesn't need a bank statement to run the school system. He said that the bank statement is just a moment in time.
In other words, we're the dumbest people in the state of South Carolina today?
We, we need a bank statement. I do every week. How many of y'all go to the ATM machine and get you a mini statement? Everybody in here, if you don't, what happens? People steal your money.
Amen.
People steal your money. Well, I was at a certain place the other day. Reason I brought this. The people, I'm working a job, as all of you know. But I'm doing the taxpayer, the taxpayers are paying me. All right, on the weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I'm working for the taxpayers. I went to a certain place, made an agreement to go somewhere, check the books out. Guess what's laying on top of the table? Full Dillon Herald page of that right there. Let me know that really, I had a councilman with me. He asked a question, 'cause this fellow admitted something. A certain county councilman with me said, uh, isn't that illegal what you just told? Don't the taxpayers need to know what you just said? You know what the man told him? We talking about school now. He said, if you stay off of Facebook and keep your mouth shut, nobody will never know about it. Well, everyone knows who you are now, right? So... Here's some questions that people are asking me at my house, parked behind the house now in secrecy. Listen, ladies and gentlemen, school taxes, I put a tax notice with it. The people at these schools and stuff are having to sneak around in the bathrooms if they got anything derogatory, same, why? Because they gonna end up, if they know, if this crowd at the school knows what you just said about it, and you know where they going? On the same place that Lakeview trustees went. They fired the trustees at Lakeview, you know why? I can name you the names right now, the trustees that stood up against this crowd. They went to the house, you know what they did? Shut the office down and moved it to Dillon. Listen, how many people do you even know this, Fuzzy? And you know it, Bessie, that Loudon has been kicked out. Do, does our attorney even know this?
Oh, gosh.
Loudon is kicked out of Dillon County? You can't even vote for a legislator, why? Fell out over this same stuff, school taxes. Well, I'll show them, I'll kick them out of the county. Where did Loudon end up at? Marion County, can't even vote for their own house member. Why? Because you got one man in power. One man in power. Did you know what the population of the state of South Carolina is, Chairman? Just a question, trivial question, anybody? Over four million people, eleven. One man in the state of South Carolina, and I stay in the big record, I don't know everything. I stay in the big record. One man in the state of South Carolina can raise your taxes or lower them.
That's right.
Now, that's having too much power, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, it is.
Now, listen to this right here. Here's what people, and I'm gonna say that, I know y'all thinking. I'm gonna check the people in this county that want me to explain this right here. A meal. What is a meal? Does anybody, does anybody out here besides the county council and the county attorney, can you get... can you tell them what a meal is? Anybody? What is a meal? A meal is what we're taxed on and a tool that we use. The power's too big. Look at us, ain't we powerful? A meal is a, is a tool that we use to let you know that your taxes just got hacked. If I shoot your taxes up by meals that just went up, how much is a meal worth? Come on. Financial director, how much is that? Sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Now, your head of the board told me that he can raise your meal, he can charge seventy-one thousand five hundred instead of sixty-eight. Now, where he came or not, he tried to explain it to me, but I don't know. But if you look at your tax notice, you'll see meals on there. People don't understand meals, and they won't make, that's what I'm doing up here, a meal. Now, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Hayes, and Mr. Rockey, three amigos I call them. They raise your school tax. You got two entities in Dillon County. You got school, county tax, and you got school tax. Now, they're blaming me for your taxes going up. You know what this county council right here is doing? Wonderful crowd, really they are. Great, we have a ball. We sit down, and that's where all this trouble come from with these taxes. We sit down, we trying to figure out how not to raise your taxes. That's how all this tax trouble stuff come up. Wonderful council. We're not gonna raise your taxes. But, listen to this but, I'm gonna say that. This but, who raises the school taxes? Come on, I'm gonna use that four of you right there. Name you, one of you, come on. Start with you.
Three amigos.
Who raises the school taxes? Your legislator by himself. By himself, how can you, how can you give one man that much power out of four million people? One man in the state can raise your school tax. But yeah, he's gonna blame me for raising your school tax. The county council right here raises your county taxes. Forget it. Long as this board sitting here, your, your taxes probably will never get raised, thank God. But you got one legislator in the state of South Carolina that can raise your taxes by himself or lower them. How about the lower? Ain't gonna happen. Thank you. I got a truckload of stuff that I can tell you. Let, let me tell you one more thing, so it'll be on record. My son started a crane school, millions of dollars investment, millions. You know where we willing to set that crane school up for these young people, the kids? Where we gonna set up, Rocky?
Northeastern, is that where you're talking about, or up?
Right out here, Northeastern. That's where we willing to go with the crane. Millions of dollars. Just started this weekend. Filled full of cranes, parking lot slammed full of students. And you know where it could have been? Right out there in Northeastern. But they want me to vote to give Northeastern with my tax dollars and your tax dollars, money out there in Northeastern. Listen, ladies and gentlemen, you paying the tax bill, go out to that school, walk in the front door if you can get in. Call out there and see if you can get a answer. You know where this crane school ended up at? Millions of dollars. The parking lot was full of students from all over the United States this past weekend. The cars that were there, first class, would have filled that parking lot out there three times. What did, what happened? What happened to the crane school out here? The same thing that's wrong with your public school today, we had to take up pencils and papers and toilet paper and towels, while this crowd leaving their big mansions at the beach and got kydums on the front of their house that big a ramp. And I'm sick of now when the people of Loudon and the people of Lakeview will join me and have a community meeting, I am willing to meet with them and tell them, hey, listen. I said all that to say this, end it this way. I said all that, just end it this way, ladies and gentlemen, a happy ending. I got a remedy for you. Call a community meeting, and listen, that quick, I got a remedy for you. Did you know? When we gonna have redistricting, Buzz?
I think it, about three years from now.
Three years, in a year. After the census. I got a remedy for Loudon getting back in Dillon County. And guess who suffered from Loudon being kicked out? The people of O'Ree County, can't even vote for their own house member down there. He had picked that population up somewhere, what'd he do? Satellite through the swamp beyond Lakeview, got O'Ree County. The people that I knew that I grew up with, the big dogs and politicians, they were never this dirty, ladies and gentlemen. They never treated people like this. And we got to put up with it. Listen, I'm gonna tell the taxpayers again, I'm gonna reiterate, so you won't think that I'm senile and need to be at the rest home. When a man has run a sixty million dollar business for thirty years and never looked at a tax notice, I mean, a, a bank account. Come on, ladies and gentlemen, help me out, please. Loudon, Lakeview, please help me out. Who cares besides me? Thank you.
All right, any other comments, anyone else, any other council members from the floor? If anything they'd like to say? Thank you, all councilmen, Scott, for those comments. All right, moving along, um, next on the agenda, the T N executive session, lost legal matter, expect building, the project bioeconomic development. Um, we gonna, this time, entertain a motion going to executive session. I like the motion, we're executing, as you say, they will get a second. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor of executive session? Any opposed? We're not in executive session, ladies and gentlemen, we don't know how long it will take. We anticipate it won't take too long. However, if you want to wait outside of council chair, if we reconvene at the door, if it opens back up, feel free to do so. At this time, we're in executive session.